We'll have our roll call, beginning with Callahan.
Callahan here.
Rodriguez here.
Dennis here.
Grayson here.
McShan here.
Kaczynowski here.
Gibson here.
Slaney here.
Love here.
Yay.
All right, and we will, oh, it's my time. Okay. We'll bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all of the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Father, we thank you for these council members, and we thank you for our unity that we stand in. And Father, as we go through this meeting, please help our minds to stay on you and to make the best decision that we possibly can for our citizens of Elgin. And Father, as we leave from here, we pray that you would give us that grace to go home safely. And Father, I want to say a special prayer for Skylar. Thank him for all that he's done through his terms. And Father, we pray that on his new journey going in a different direction, that he will be successful, and to give him grace and mercy where he stands in need of. In the sweet name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Which does Texas what?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We start off with a public hearing on an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Elgin, Texas, adopted in chapter forty-six, section four-six-three, revised code of ordinances, city of Elgin, Texas, two thousand and thirteen, and making this amendment a part of said official zoning map to which to rezone from R-one, single-family housing, district two, R-two, single-family and duplex dwelling district located on parcels of land known by the Travis County Appraisal District as parcels three-five-eight-eight-zero-zero, three-five-eight-eight-zero-one, and three-five-eight-eight-zero-two, located between Carlson Lane and Carlson Road, across from Eagles Landing, being a five-two-point-seven-six acre tract out of the Henry Smith survey number sixty-five, abstract five-eighteen, Travis County, being described in exhibit A, attached hereto, and providing a savings clause and repealing conflicting ordinances and resolutions.
Good one. It's a long one.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing for action items on the agenda later this evening. It's a conventional request for a zoning change by the property owner from R-one residential, R-two. You may be kind of familiar with this tract. We've looked at it before. It's on the north side of Carlson Lane, right at the end of the city limits. It's a very long, narrow piece that the owner has requested a change from R-one to R-two. Planning and zoning commission unanimously recommended approval.
No, nobody will speak on it. Public hearing is closed. Now we're up to our public comment. Jennifer, did we have?
No.
Yeah, then. Next, we have a presentation. Our proclamation declaring June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Juneteenth in the city of Elgin. Whereas Juneteenth is the oldest nationally celebrated commemoration of the end of slavery in the United States. It was on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, and on today, June nineteen, two thousand and twenty-three, we, the people of color, continue encouraging self-development and respect for all cultures, remembering freedom is not free. And whereas on June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, that date, June nineteenth, became a national holiday signed by the United States President Joseph R. Biden, Jr., a day to reflect on both bondage and freedom, a day of both pain and purpose, a day to heal, to hope, and to emerge from our worst moments as a stronger, freer, and a day to celebrate the power and resilience of Black Americans who have endured generations of oppression in the ongoing journey toward equal justice, equal dignity, equal rights, and equal opportunity in America. And whereas Black American communities and families have celebrated Juneteenth for over a hundred and fifty years, and the Twenty-Fourth Annual Elgin Juneteenth Celebration will take place at Veterans Memorial Park on June ninth and tenth, two thousand and twenty-three, including a cultural parade with a route to Uptown as the organization maintains their motto, let's put unity back in the community. Whereas Elgin Juneteenth presented Zoe Penelope Wright, Sebastian Bernard Jackson, D'Anthony J. Vaughn Moore, and Raylisha J. Laquay Anuski, graduating seniors from Elgin High School with five-hundred-dollar scholarship, and they joined forces with Elgin MLK Junior Scholarship Foundation and gave five twelve-hundred-dollar scholarships to Adrino Vaskis, D'Anthony J. Vaughn Moore, Raylisha J. Laquay Anuski, Sebastian Bernard Jackson, and Zoe Penelope White. And whereas Elgin Depot Museum will open their doors to remember and provide education on Black churches of Elgin. The Visions Board will be on display beginning June ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. And whereas National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, Elgin Branch Number Six-One-Seven-Four presents Celebrate Juneteenth on Juneteenth, Freedom is Not Free. This celebration will present If Not You, Then Who, in the middle of town at Veterans Memorial Park at six forty-five in the evening. The event will be hosted by Reverend D.W. Townsend and some pastors and ministers of the city. And whereas the dedicated work of Mrs. Amy Miller, Mrs. Betty Lofton, and Mrs. Gwen Johnson with the members of the Elgin Juneteenth and the NAACP Elgin Branch, with the support of Reverend D.W. Townsend and the pastors and ministers of the city of Elgin, is evident in the production of this day. In Elgin, and now therefore I, Theresa Yvonne McShan, Mayor of Elgin, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the citizens of the city of Elgin, do hereby proclaim June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Juneteenth Day in the city of Elgin. I call upon the citizens of the city of Elgin to acknowledge and separate and celebrate the end of the Civil War and the emancipation of enslaved Black Americans and commit together to eradicate systemic racism and equity that should never be tolerated and must always be fought against as one town, one team, one family. And witness whereof I have set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Elgin, Texas, to be affixed the sixth day of June, two thousand and twenty-three. And can we have representatives come forward, please, for Amy to get a picture? No, that's what she wants to do. Okay, the next thing we're going to do real quick is we're going to celebrate Skylar. Skylar, if you will come forward, please. We have something for you for all of your hard work these past term, two years you've been on council. Presenting to Skylar Maldonado in appreciation for your two years of service and dedication as council member for the city of Elgin, Texas, two thousand and twenty-one through two thousand and twenty-three. Yes, I did. All right, city managers report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item we have on the report tonight is the presentation of the proposed two thousand and twenty-three five-year capital plan. We've left a hard copy of the plan at everybody's place here for you to look at tonight. This is a really important planning document that the city updates every year. We have, we do all kinds of strategic planning throughout the year with all of our projects that we work on. But the five-year capital plan is where we try to define major capital improvement projects and to prioritize those projects, track what projects we've done in the past, and what we intend to do in the future. It's, we've had a number of good years, as you might guess, here in Elgin, here lately, of really progress in the city in a lot of different ways. And certainly, as far as it relates to capital investment, investing tax dollars and other funds directly back into the community. This document is a plan. It's non-appropriation. While it has a lot of numbers in it and cost projections, adoption of the plan is just that. It's our intentions moving forward, but it shouldn't be considered as actual funding for any of these projects. So I'm going to run through it briefly, and then the council will obviously have time to work on this for over the next two months. The format of the plan is the same, and as we had in the past, there's a brief description of each project, cost estimate for that project, and then those projects that are funded. The plan illustrates where those funds are coming from. The plan's basically separated into three main categories. One, we try to look back and track what projects we've done the last five years so we don't lose sight of the investments we've made and the projects that we've been successful on. Then there's a section that talks about what we're proposing, the staff is proposing for funding for the next fiscal year. That also includes grant funds from various areas and debt issuances. And then we also provide a list of projects that, as you might imagine, we always have way more projects than we have money for. But this is the way we get those listed, documented, and prioritized, and so we can plan for moving forward in the future. As shown in the plan, in the last five years alone, the city has invested over twenty million dollars in capital improvements in various projects in the city. We've certainly done more of that over a longer period of time, but it's a very good stretch. It's a very good progressive approach by the city. But we certainly have a more optimistic year. Our better years are ahead of us here in the future. Those are the twenty million dollars started. A lot of this, I think, kind of started with the construction of our rec center and emergency shelter. Once we got that built, we've been on a steady path of a number of major capital improvements and investments in town. So even though we've invested twenty million dollars in capital improvements over the last five years, what the staff includes in this plan is investment of over fifty-six million dollars in capital improvements that we think will probably be completed by this time next year or a little later, a little longer than the twenty-three calendar year. But this is what, this number is very exciting for us, and these are all projects that are already funded. Most of them are underway, and we'll see them get completed over the next year or so. We do have the one major grant project we got for County Line Road Phase Two and Kennedy Street. It's in the plan, but a total grant of eleven million dollars. We're still working on the plan for that, those two projects, so we don't have a lot of definition about those two. But those are both projects we hope to start this year. Our CO projects continue to move forward from prior debt issues that we made in previous years, particularly in two thousand and twenty-one. Over forty-four million dollars worth of projects, combining those CO funds with private funding and grants, should be completed next year. So these are the list of the projects that make up that fifty million dollars. The big projects, the police station, County Line Road Phase One, our wastewater treatment plant expansion, it'll double the size of the plant. Those three projects alone represent almost thirty million dollars in capital improvements that'll be completed next year. So with ARPA money that we got funded, that the council approved the funding for, we're going to see park improvements that we're going to talk a little bit about later this evening. So again, as we've talked about, this is a big year for us, an exciting year for the city that we're going to see this much investment come back to town and these projects get done. So combining those two issues, from two thousand and seventeen through two thousand and twenty-four, we're on schedule to invest over seventy-six million dollars in Elgin, Texas. And the good news about that is just over half of that is going to be paid for by taxpayers. That almost half of that money will come from either grants, private development, or other exterior sources for us. We've been very successful in grant acquisition and securing funds from outside the city and outside our ratepayers and taxpayers. So that's probably the most exciting part about that. Not only that we're going to see that investment, that almost half of it's going to be paid through grants. Of course, the bad news is we've got seventy million dollars of projects we don't have funding for that is in this plan. But I think it's a really good plan, and I think we, the time the council spent over the last few years working on this plan and the staff, that I think we've got all the projects identified, all the projects that we want to do, all the projects we want to see done. It's just, again, we've still got a long ways to go before we'll have all the money to do those projects. And so this page is, I think it's page four or five, it lists all of the projects that we've identified that are in the plan, but that we are not, we don't have funded yet. Now, due to council's, let me back up there a little bit. This list, last year, for, I think, the first time, the council put a bigger effort in prioritization of the unfunded projects. Previously, the staff had pretty much listed these, but this list, as shown here, and the ranking really reflect what projects we couldn't fund before, that the council formed a consensus about what the priorities are. And again, I think that's, that'll probably be the biggest part of council's effort in this year's plan is to make sure that the other projects we already have in motion, these other projects that we have yet to figure out how we're going to fund, are the ones that we'll want council to pay attention to specifically to make sure that we've got our priorities in order, where our needs are. One thing I'd draw to council's attention, though, that there are a handful of new projects that we've inserted in the plan. Most of these you've seen before from prior year, five-year plans. One is funding to preserve our historic city hall. The interior is not the problem. If you've stood and looked at the building from the outside, there's a lot of deterioration going on with that building. We've had some people take a look at it, and it's not going to be a simple task for us. But obviously, I think we all agree that its place in history in town will be important for us to preserve it. So there's an earmark in the plan, I think, of two hundred thousand dollars to do a wide range of preservation improvements to primarily the exterior of the city hall. The second new project is pickleball courts. I don't know if anybody's a pickleball player here, but it's a fast-growing sport that we have, people show a lot of interest in. And we've heard from folks and the park staff and the Parks and Rec Board. So we've included a proposal in here to build a pickleball court at Morris Park in an open area adjacent to the basketball court over there. But again, as I should say, these are all projects that are in the unfunded section, so we don't, we're doing the easy part. We're coming up with the idea. We don't have the money to pay for them. Get back. We put in two projects, the Extension Innovation Way and the Rivers Road Railroad Crossing. These are both projects in the business park that we've discussed before, and we have a need for. But in both cases, it's my assumption that the EDC, those are EDC-driven projects, and they'll be the primary funder of both of those projects as development occurs out in that area. And then finally, Public Works Maintenance Facility, like everything else, we need to expand and enhance our maintenance facility that we have. We think we can do that in the existing space, in the location where we have, but we need to fund some other building improvements, an additional building. But those, we've inserted those in what we think is the appropriate location in the rankings of the unfunded projects. So with that, the plan itself will be available. We always will make an electronic version. This will be available on our website. We try to keep copies at City, hard copies at City Hall and here at the library for folks to come in and take a look at if they want to review it. Our tentative schedule for the budget calendar was a work session next week. If council will be ready for that, but again, that's when, and we have that work session, obviously, is totally up to council. Then our regular meeting schedule in July, we would have a public hearing to receive any comments from the public on the regular meeting on July eleventh. And then our second meeting, again, is tentatively scheduled for July eighteenth. We often, sometimes skip that second meeting in July. But it's important to understand, this is unlike the budget, the five-year plan is something we do voluntarily. We're not mandated in any way to do it. We're not required by the charter or any city ordinance. So the public hearings, the adoption, aren't dictated by a formal process or a calendar, but we always try to have a hearing and do have it formally adopted at some point. So how these dates work out, we'll figure out what's best for everybody. So that's all I have tonight, Mayor. Just for anybody listening, whatever, this is the first time the council's seen the plan as we were literally presenting it tonight, so they'll need a chance to study it. But this is part of the budget process. We get the five-year plan done first, and then and then we'll start the budget. The budget will be presented in August, and hopefully, the major capital issues will be addressed through this process before we get into the budget. With that, that's really all I had, Mayor. Unless there's been any questions for me or follow-up on anything I said.
Yeah, a couple, a question. For items that are not new to the plan, when was the last time we priced these out?
We review all those every time.
Every year?
Yeah. And some of the numbers have changed for that reason.
Yeah, I just know that construction and inflation costs.
Yeah, I would say, right. And I would say, Joy, to that point, you know, some of the issues, you get down to the end of the list, the swim complex and things like that. It's hard to come up with real hard numbers right now. But the more specific projects, sidewalks, things like that, yes, we take a look at those numbers and update them. Probably has to do with the smaller amount of money. The more likelihood will come up with some money. So we try to make sure those numbers are right.
Well, and even like, I mean, let me pick something out here small. Okay. Depot Museum Parking Lot, seventy-four thousand. Just wouldn't want us to somehow allocate money to that and then go bid the project. And it's like, well, we actually need a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, and I mean, that's, truthfully, we're going to talk a little bit of that scenario tonight. So, but, but yes, the short answer is we review all those numbers. It's only the projects that we have funded that are based. The numbers come off strict analysis or bids. The unfunded are, we think, are good estimates, but yes, they're not overly precise.
So the unfunded, it doesn't, I see that the rankings, one through thirty-five.
Right.
So as she was saying, like, example, the depot street, so that one's ranked number twenty-two. Would that be something that could be changed? Like, or is this ranking, the ranking that was set?
No, this was what was set last year. That's really why it's important to review this process every year. Because projects can, well, yeah, that's council's discretion, because a project may move down. It may not be as important as we thought it was last year, or other projects can move up, yes. That's really what the biggest part of council's involvement in this exercise is, this ranking, is to make sure. Because as we move forward, and again, I would just say, the staff's plate is really full right now. But by this time next year, we're going to be thinking about other new projects, and we want to be able to go to this plan and say, okay, these are the ones we should be focused on. So yes, definitely, if we want some to move up or move down, depending on what council consensus is.
If I may, to that point, I hope council will, when we look at some of these items on the lower end of the list, will consider Joy's comment about inflation, land acquisition, for example. The last two on here, the swim complex and the municipal sports complex, if we wait five years to purchase that land, it's going to be double what it is now this year. So I realize that's a big-ticket item, a million dollars or five hundred grand for those projects, but at least we can start chipping away at it. It's not to say that they're more important than others, but we need to be considering those things as we look through this list.
Yeah, I completely agree on that, and we can maybe even save this for a work session. But I would be curious, with some of these larger ticket items, what, a potential, like, regional sports center, whether that's Flugerville or Travis County or Maynor, for some of these larger projects, could it be a multiple funding sources? these larger projects, could it be a multiple funding sources from different municipalities?
Absolutely.
Or even, you know, a school district, you know, is it EISD and City of Elgin, because both entities are going to use it, or the school district is going to use it for aquatic programming? I don't know, just thinking long-term.
So, we want to get some of that school money.
Yeah, it's much more restrictive than the city money, that's for sure, but, I mean, certainly that can be looked into. I just think that we need to have some deeper discussions about that, but we'll save that for a work session.
Yeah, we have opportunity to develop a tighter relationship with county members of those types of projects.
And we got two counties, too, so I think, you know, we do have a little bit of flexibility that not all municipalities have.
Back to your question, Councilmember Love, sometimes grants come up with the staff lines, where it's specific to a thing, and so then it'll automatically move, because this one thing is specific to that grant, and that's where we can get that money, and so then that would automatically move it around, too.
Yeah, that's a good point. If we get funded, we'll move it up. I would just say, too, the funding source is something we're going to have to think about, too, these, you know, some of these lower numbers, you know, there may be an opportunity to find funding in the operating budget, but these bigger things, we're talking about more debt, is, I guess, is what I'm getting at, and so, that's part of it, too. We might be thinking about a package, what would be the next package? And I would say, too, that, just to Al's point, is 32 there is acquiring a park land, too. So, we talked about maybe a combination of a land site, that would be a park and one of those complexes, something like that, but, but yeah, if we, if we, if we're committed to those projects, you're exactly right, we can't wait until we have all the money together to be buying the land.
So, to be clear, to answer Councilmember Love's question, we will re-rank these as part of our two-month process, right?
Yeah, yeah, if that's council's choice. You remember, what we did last year was, the mayor had asked everybody, take the next five years and rank, tie up that, so we made, and then we took everybody's input, made one master list, and that's what we used for this list, with the exception of those few I showed, we inserted those, so, but yeah, for all the reasons we're talking about here, it's good, you know, once you even get this plan set, that's the part of, you know, what some people refer to as strategic planning, or whatever, there's not a plan you adopt that you stick to forever, and things change every year.
But we want to respect the previous councils, but this is a new council.
Well, and I think, yeah, and I think this is the point that we, by looking at it every year, we can get it set where it doesn't change dramatically, but yet, it is important to review for the things we're saying here, that things can change, and I think Sue's point's a good one, if a project could be really low on this list, but if we somehow wound up with half the money from some outside source, that might make it move up really quick.
But you know I'm big on work sessions, so just don't worry.
Get out my orange cord.
All right, Mayor, that's about all I had on that, really, for my report, we've got the Board of Adjustment and Building Standards Commission Quarterly Report in your packet, and I don't really have anything else that's not agenda-specific, unless anybody has a question for me about anything. Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, the Board of Adjustments and Building Standard Commission are the two committees we have that only meet when someone makes a request, so we can go long stretches without them having meetings, so that's why they don't have a whole lot to report. That's all I had, Mayor.
Okay, so we'll move on to our consent agenda, and if there's nothing that anyone wants to pull, we have our minutes, resolution for City Council of City authorizing execution in agreement with Texas Department of Transportation for a temporary closure of a state right of way, that's during Hog Eye Festival, we have letters for Hog Eye Festival, and then the next resolution, number three, is authorizing the city manager to approve professional service fees with FGM Architects, related to the Elgin Police Department Station project, and the number four is a resolution, City of Elgin authorizing relocation and re-titling of positions within the department's finance, development services, public safety, and wastewater plant, which includes a county clerk to accountant, building inspector to city planner, patrol officer to detective, and lab technician to plant operator. Number five is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with RDC paving of Brown Rock, Texas Forest Street repairs, and maintaining findings, that's all on this consent agenda. Is there anything anybody wants to pull, to talk about?
I would like to talk about number five.
Okay.
Can I talk about it? I can talk about it right now, or we got to wait?
We can, what y'all want to do?
Oh, I want to.
Talk about it now?
Can I?
You want to pull something?
Yeah, I'd like to pull four.
Okay, so we're pulling four and five. Do I have a motion to accept everything else other than four and five, because we're about to pull?
Mayor, I make a motion to accept items one, two, and three on the consent agenda.
Okay.
And I'll second.
All right, thank you, it's been moved to second, and we'll begin with Mayor Proton Brescher.
Brescher, yes.
McShane, yes?
Kaczynowski, yes.
Gibson, yes.
Wayne, yes.
Love, yes.
Callan, yes.
Rodriguez, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Okay, Alicia, since she was first, we'll do number five?
Okay, well, I've had a question, number five, so how was the RDC paving in Brown Rock, Texas Forest Drive, for them to do the repairs? How were they selected? So, was it a bid, or was it just an offer made out to them? How were they selected?
You got proposals, or three bids. When we do smaller projects like this, we don't do that, we're not compelled to do a formal advertising bid for time's sakes, but we get three bids, and they were the best bid.
Okay.
People who have heard it before.
I ask that, because do we know what type of gravel or asphalt or paving they're going to use?
Yes.
Because I remember the last one, another lady stated, the city fixed roads for them, but it was pebble roads, is it going to be pebble roads, whereas wiped away with the rain? What type of quality? And I know it says tech doc approval, but what is tech docs? Tech docs mean approval on it?
I mean, base asphalt, is that what you mean? We're going, we're trying to go each time more away from what I call tar and gravel, and do asphalt, that's what we do, asphalt repairs, we're doing more asphalt streets now, just the standard, like, be the same repair like if we were doing, like tech doc would do, or like we'd do on a new street.
Okay, so then another question.
Okay.
So, as I was reading it, it was stating that if they found anything, or they had to pull up more than what was stated for the 30,000, then they would have to put on more, the amount would be increased.
Right.
So, when they do that, do they automatically come out first to assess the streets, or they just automatically put in bids, say, hey, we'll come out and fix it, although they haven't looked at it yet?
We tell them what we think the situation is, sometimes they come out and look at it, sometimes they don't, but that is standard provision, that just means, if we start digging in the hole and find something else in there, then it's fair that they may have to charge us more, and we charge, and we pay more. Now, the staff's with them on that, the whole process.
Is it normally an extreme amount higher?
It's rare that it happens. Usually, they, this, like we said, these, this repair, I think we said this in the packet, this is really, we don't, typically, these are repairs we can do ourselves, with our own people and equipment now, but we just got so behind on mowing some other stuff, we wanted to go ahead and do these, so, so we're confident, we know what it takes to fix them, but yeah, and it's just like any construction, there's, it's always a.
So, if they come back and they say, hey, this is what we found, y'all confident enough to say, no, this is what we believe?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, they don't, they don't do it and just send us another bill.
Okay.
When they find it, they stop, and then we go out, and we agree on what the solution is for there.
Kind of a protection for them.
Right.
And it's part of the scope, if they ended up finding gold.
And it's not.
Or some sort of, you know, I don't know, you know, burial site.
But there is a contingency fee, is what you're saying.
Yes.
So, that isn't expanded, that comes back to us.
No, no, this is the price to do this project.
So, there's no contingency?
There's no contingency in these repairs, I was just going to say.
It's a smaller project.
Right, a new road, then we bid it out, there's very specific plans, and you are committed, we're going to build this exact thing, and there's usually contingency that if they don't use it, you get the money back, because these are just potholes they're fixing for us. I don't think there'll be any problem, but, yeah, it's reasonable for them to say, like, you know, it could be a sinkhole underneath that pothole, and they'd need more money to fix that, so, but it's something the staff's on top of, and if there is any change like that, they, the contractor will stop right then, Michael and the team will go out, and we'll all agree about what the solution is before their number goes up.
It's where the water department has dug up for repairs for the pipes, and then they need to, it's those kinds of things.
Well, that's true, too, because they could find something under that way that we'd have to fix, so, but yeah, this isn't, it's kind of unusual for us in that we're doing more of these repairs ourselves, that we're doing this one time, but at the same time, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, that's my question. Tom, do you have, do you have the 25 locations? Will that be shared with the public?
Where the repairs are going on?
Yeah.
We have them.
Just, I think it'd be nice to say, Alyssa, if you see this happening, this is what this is, you know?
Okay, we can do that.
Can I also ask about two streets? Well, I guess it's one street, but in two areas?
Um, yeah.
Since we're talking about road repairs, I guess, is that Brenham and Avenue C, in front of the Wings Place?
In front of Third Coast?
Yeah.
Brenham and Avenue C.
Yeah, it's all torn up. I mean, there's gravel there, and then at Brenham, and I can't remember the next stop sign. It's also torn up there.
That was part of your passion, yes.
So, this is this?
That's why it's helpful for the 25 locations.
Is this part of the $500 package that we approved earlier in the year?
No, this is, this is not part of our regular street paving, like I said, it's more about, we realized that it was going to be the summer or longer before we could get back to them, and budgetarily, we can afford it, so we just recommend that we go ahead and get these things done now.
Okay. Everybody clear on number five? Number four?
We're going back four.
Yeah, sorry, let me get my notes. So, I guess, a couple of questions. I think the first one was, I think I remember from the budget session last year, there was going to be, I think, some salary banding done within the department, and I'm looking at Al, because I specifically remember, I think, at one of the work sessions, because you're in human resources at the district, mentioning that, and so wondering if that had been done prior to these, I think, new positions coming on. So, that's question one.
These aren't new positions, we're just, we're just changing the job titles on them, existing positions that are funded.
Okay, but I think, because we didn't, did we have a city planner before?
No.
So, do we have, I guess, a?
We have a building inspector position now that's funded, and we're changing that.
But is that the same kind of class or title?
Is it within the same?
It's in the same department.
Bert, okay.
Are you just repurposing the name?
Yeah.
Because that's, I think, that's what she's trying to get to.
I get what you're saying, because it's just like, if you're a customer service rep, and they're stating, well, you're still a customer service rep, but want to change your name to department assistant, because it's still the same pay, still technically the same title.
Right.
Just you're changing your title, but still same pay.
Oh, no, these, they're different jobs, the point is, what the changes we're making here, we feel are more reflective of what those positions are actually doing now, or what we want them to do.
Right.
Like we talked about with, in that case, with the building inspector, we've had two or at least two of those positions funded for three or four years, and we just can't find building inspectors. We do have a need for a planner, so we're converting those dollars into this position.
Okay, but was that, is that not, my recollection not correct, in terms of doing the salary banning, because we did the across-the-board increase, and then we were, there was going to be, I think, like, a look at kind of how that affected all the staffing?
I guess I'm not clear on what you're talking about.
I know that we talked about making sure that the markets were.
Look, I would suggest that this is a routine item, you can, we can talk about it later, it isn't time-sensitive.
Okay.
We've been wanting to move forward with it, and we need to create the positions, but it's a more accurate reflection of how we're spending the money now, and where we need positions, but it's budget-neutral, staffing-neutral.
That's what I was going to say, so is the budgetary impact is neutral, then?
Neutral, won't change the number of employees or authorized positions, we're just simply changing titles.
Okay, and then, I am, out of curiosity, I don't, have we ever had a city planner? Because that's kind of exciting.
No, I don't think so.
What would, I'm curious, like, I know what city planners do, but in terms of Elgin, do we have, I don't know, certain expertise in city planning, or certain things, like we're hoping to gain, I'm just more curious.
Yeah, that's what we're hoping to do, gain expertise.
I guess, I think the question is, so, the city has never had a city planner before, I think that's a pretty important step, going from a building inspector to a city planner, so I think my question is, then, as a city, and as we're looking at growth, what is the goal of having that city planner on staff?
Well, we're not going from a building inspector to a city planner, we're not turning the building inspector into a city planner.
Well, from a budgetary standpoint, we are, right?
Yeah, we're just using the funding for that. Well, part of that is, we've had a need for a planner, we have a need for a lot of things that we haven't been able to afford before. As you say, the city's never had a planner, so we do think it's important, although, truthfully, the role of the planner has changed dramatically in Texas, and so how we use them, what we can use them for, these are functions that we're already doing, we just don't have somebody designated as a planner to take care of those things, so, and the building inspector is a position that's not funded, the money's not being used, just think it's a more effective way to run the operation, so, again, there's, we're not expecting dramatic impact, any of these changes, just a better way to use the money and the staffing that we have.
Okay, that's all I have.
Any further questions on four or five before we vote? Okay, do I have a motion to accept four and five?
So, no, Mayor.
Second?
I'll second it.
All right, let's begin with Mayor Proton.
Brescher, yes.
McShane, yes?
Kaczynowski, yes.
Gibson, yes.
Wayne, yes.
Love, yes.
Callan, yes.
Rodriguez, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Okay, new business now, we have an update on Veterans Park Expansion Project?
Thank you, Mayor, actually, if you look down the agenda, you'll see that we're, the new business topic of the day is parks, so, we're just, have different action items, but I wanted to give you an update on, start off with an update on the Veterans Park project, as we're going to talk about Thomas Park and Morris Park tonight, other project, as you recall, we started out two years ago with funding out of the COs to put into these projects, and we've continued to add to those funds, and so, we're now in a situation where basically, we've, the planning is essentially complete on the Veterans Park Part A, and we're ready to move forward with that part, but I'd ask Amy, we're ready to move forward with a bid, we were talking earlier this evening about this, this will be a more conventional bid, in that we'll be hiring one contractor to build the whole project, and we're ready to go out with those bids, so we just kind of, not that we have a whole, brand-new thing to show you, but I wanted Amy to just kind of run down the plans, she's left a packet of information for you, a hard copy, a lot of what we're going to look at here, but we are excited about. at here, but, but we are excited about this moving forward and, and wanted to do one more run through before we bring you back the contract for the bid.
Okay, so in your package, your first page is an overview to remind us of how central the park is in the overall community and the downtown district. The planning covered everything from Main Street to Avenue A. You had authorized planning for 30% plans for that whole area, but 100% to construction plans for Block A. So when you look at your second page, that is the, kind of the current overall design and layout for all four blocks. We'll go to bid on Block A with some additional items. So on your third page, it's where the colors become important. So last year you approved and we've already had in motion the purchase of the playground equipment, which is the Compan Train and all the associated elements that go with that. But that needs a place to sit and so the overall green area is a bonded rubber mulch surfacing for all that play equipment. There's a water feature, a water play element for the kids that involves a hand pump, there's a great, there's trees, landscaping, seating. Then in the middle, you have the stage area with the outdoor classroom and as we continue across Avenue B, which will be closed to vehicular traffic, we then begin to look at some new pieces to potentially add to this. So that first block, everything in green, is fully funded in either dollars that we've raised through grants and private donations and city funding. But the next three pieces that I'm gonna talk about are elements that could be included, that you could authorize funding for, that are gonna be a little bit more than all those dollars we put together. So we'll talk about the pieces and then we'll look at the budget. So the blue area continues across Avenue B on Depot Street. This is a existing area with several trees. It's really a very attractive part to add to the park expansion. We have utilities that would be done here and you have fencing that of course is already gonna be running along Block A, along the railroad tracks. It would be very cost-effective to continue that fencing for Blocks B, C, and D. So those primary extra pieces are additional fencing so that we go ahead and do that safety fencing along the railroad tracks and then an extension into what is actually Block D, that's your blue part. So the green area is right at an estimate of 1.1 million, 119,155 dollars, so just over 1.1 million. The additional pieces in the blue, red, and yellow for Blocks B, C, and D would be 325,000, again, as an estimate, based on Studio 1619's cost estimates. We haven't gone to bid yet. So in overall funds that have been raised for the project, we raised 680,000 in private donations and grant projects and we'd definitely like to make a specific point here about your Parks and Rec Program Manager, Elizabeth Marzak, and the incredible work that she has been doing on this project and supporting me on the fundraising side of it. In particular, our St. David's grant for 300,000 that you received last year, she had a big, big hand to play in that. On the city's part, you authorized 600,000 in your 2021A bonds and then last year, as you were working through your ARPA funds, you authorized 300,000 from there. So there is only a difference of 103,990 dollars in terms of funds raised versus doing all of these pieces. We don't know, of course, when the bids come in, what those numbers will shake out to be, but this was a good opportunity to let you know that in that overall planning, which you did to be cost-effective, this is offering us some cost-effective options to do some additional pieces to support the overall Block A expansion.
Thanks, Amy. And so just as you reminded me, when we say water feature, that doesn't mean splash pad.
Oh, no, no, this is a really cool, it's a creek. It's a little creek in the playground, right. It's a creek in the playground where the kids will literally actively participate in making water by pumping it and then playing in the water. And they'll be able to build dams and all sorts of fun parts. It's just like at the Thinkery, which is a cool thing in Austin that now you won't have to drive to because you're gonna have amazing Thinkery stuff right here in downtown Elgin.
We're, we're all about trying to get splash pads done, but we got our feelings hurt when we found out what they cost. So we're, we're still, it's in the plan, we're still hopeful to do that someday, it just won't be this part.
In the dollar amount? Back here in the dollar amount? So, so you're gonna, we're gonna go out for bid on all of it?
Yes.
And if the bids come back, and I hope not, we're all good because we've done our due diligence with planning, but in the event that the bids come back high, we can take out some, if need be, before we move forward for this part. Yes?
Yeah, basically, that's what Amy has shown here is the blue, is that if we need a balancer, you know, we're hopeful that, that money, that it'll come in. We're still, as she's shown here, we're still a little short to do this entire view as you're showing here, but we're gonna do Block D as a deduct in the bid and we'll see how it comes out. And then, you know, we, we also have sources of other money we can talk about at that time. So we'll have some options available to us, but, but our commitment is to hit this number and, and just like we've done the other projects and we, you know, I think it says a lot that we started out with $600,000 and really literally came up with a million dollars from other sources to do this, do as much as we can, so. So yeah, we're, you're right, we'll, we're still, we're still committed to building a project that'll hit the money we have in hand. And, but similar to what we did with the police station, when it comes down to the final decision-making, we'll be asking council to decide at that point, is it more important we hit the number or supplement it with other funds to do the bigger project now? So, so that's, that's the conversation we anticipate having once we get the bids in.
I have a question. All super exciting, excited to see this park come alive and just roughly timeline?
Well, so we, after tonight's meeting, we would be able to go out for bids. We're at 100% construction plans this week, so we would go to bid in June. We would hope to be able to be bringing you ready-to-award contract in August and have a groundbreaking. The Compan Train's gonna be ready and so we need to get the ground ready to receive it. But we would, it has 180-day standard construction timeline. Once we got those bids in, we, then we could talk about more compact and firm timelines.
The train has 180 days?
No, no, no. The whole, it's a, it's a typical construction contract that they'll have 180 days, but it shouldn't take anywhere close to six months.
So it's possible next year by this time, security could be plain and the water feature?
Yes, that we would feel confident about.
And I think I'd just say that, just clarify, because people are always asking about timeline for the park and it's helpful just to know what to...
Right. It'll be under construction during the Hog Eye Festival and this area, of course, is already gonna be supporting the police department construction. So one change to Hog Eye is that they are not hosting a carnival this year because we don't physically have a place to put that. But Christina, as our Main Street manager, has been working on new and additional and different cool kids activities, so there's still gonna be a ton of stuff to do. It'll be ready sometime there between spring and right about now.
Actually, we didn't necessarily plan it out this way, but the way it could play out is the new park and the new police station will almost be open at the same time, so it's an exciting change for downtown.
I'd just like to say I like the idea of doing the fencing for the whole project on both sides of the railroad, because if we have kids starting to come into that area, we need to make sure that we have all the city barriers in place and so I think that would be a high priority for us to do that.
You'll have your chance on that. Let us get the bids going. So, yes, it's exciting and I think that's the other part about doing this briefing. As Joyce said, we wanna, we wanna keep going, so, so whenever we get the bids, we'll be ready to make some quick decisions with council, hopefully at that point, and we can keep the schedule Amy just talked about. Okay, Mayor, if you want us to keep going?
Keep going.
So the next item on the agenda is a resolution to approve the, an agreement for our new playground equipment at Morris Park. Council, I know we talked about this before and mentioned previously in the five-year plan, that the council, city had received about $2 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds in, last year and we devoted a half, about a half of that, a million dollars to the police station project and then council agreed to taking the remaining million dollars and spreading it out amongst Thomas Park, Veterans Park project we just talked about and Morris Park. If you've been to Morris Park in the last year or so, you know that, that the playground structure there is about half closed because for safety reasons, it's, it's damaged and fallen apart and well past its useful life and needs to be replaced, so that's what we intend to use these ARPA dollars for. This is a good artistic rendering of, of the playground equipment that we bid, it's hit our number, we're ready to go. Actually, this item and the next item on the agenda are both associated with this project. The first is to authorize the acquisition of this playground equipment. The second is to replace the playground surface with rubberized mulch pellets. We're, we've found them to be very effective and use them on the new, the new playground in Memorial Park and so we're committed to, as every playground we change out, we're gonna go to these safer, better ground cover pellets, so. So these, the first contract is to approve the acquisition and installation of the playground equipment and then the second is to do the corresponding surface work as well. Amy, do you have anything to add to that or?
So on this part, this was a really, a new and exciting project for this year and so I'm sure you guys remember that the pandemic was an interesting and different time in a lot of ways, but as a city, we definitely stayed very busy and had a lot of things going on. And one of the projects that Elizabeth shepherded through the end of the pandemic and brought you a master parks plan in early 2021 to adopt, that reflected a great deal of community input. This project, the need to deal with this playground was referenced there and it was in your CIP and then it became very clear last year that it simply could not be put off and you made the choice to raise that up and allocate these ARPA funds. But then, when you task staff with figuring out what kind of playground, well, there are thousands of playground options. And so Elizabeth, she and the Parks Board, they put together this voting option and took it out to our schools, they did the ACE programs, they had it up at the rec center, it was at SIP shop and stroll. All grownups and kids, everybody had a chance to get to vote on what kind of playground, what type of playground would you like to see in Morris Park? And in the end, the kids really wanted a tower and the adults were really keen on the whole nature thing and so Elizabeth worked with this Whirlx company and figured out how to get us a treehouse tower element that is very nature-oriented. So sometimes we are really able to kind of bring all the pieces together and really come back to the community with, this is what you asked for. So this playground is an outstanding reflection of the community input that we've received and it's absolutely meeting your budget of what you allocated with your ARPA funds. So it is two different contractors. Whirlx is the company that does the playground equipment itself and then Front of Balance is the surfacing and city forces are gonna be helping deal with prepping the area. The pecan trees that are directly adjacent to the existing play area, those are all gonna be preserved and they're actually gonna help provide shade. The new swing component that you see in the drawings has its own shade cover, so you'll have more shade available at this park. And we also have a lot of accessibility for all included in this playground activities. So yes, you can see in some of your drawings, you, because of your bonded rubber mulch surfacing, a child who might be using a wheelchair is gonna be able to transfer two different pieces of equipment and it's gonna be a lot more inclusive than, certainly than what we have right now, which got put in place in about 1995. So you've definitely gotten your money's worth out of the playground equipment that's there.
So we're, and combined, if you look at the packets, this is still, actually, the two contracts come in under, under the budget, so this is ready to go right away, right, Amy? Timing for this?
Yes, it is. If you authorize this tonight, we have, actually, we have one of our contractors in the audience. That's our, that's our playground Whirlx contractor.
So two weeks, it'll be done?
Not quite that fast.
Okay, but we're, we're on it right away, so for the end of the summer, certainly.
You will, you'll see activity by the end of the summer. Playground equipment, much like a fire truck, it's not like it's on a shelf for us to just pull off and have shipped to us. So there is a timeline, but if you guys authorize tonight, we'll have a strong, solid update for you at your meeting on the 20th.
Are we adding elements?
Well...
From what we have currently?
Yes, this is really completely different than what you have on site today. While you have a climbing and a slide and a swing element, I think I'll let Elizabeth tell you about the bonus of all the stuff you're getting.
All right, so I want, Amy's so much shorter than I am. The, so this is actually, you can see from the aerial in your packet, there is a main structure, which is the tall one. That platform footing on the tall structure is 10 feet tall, which makes it taller than our existing one. It's also a wider platform, so multiple children can be in the treehouse at the same time, whereas our existing one, the highest point is for a single individual. So this whole idea is all about cooperative play. As Amy said, it's really accessible, so not just for, you know, a child, but now adults can also participate because the heights and the sizes are able for a parent to lean in and, I know, Mayor, you're gonna get on there, it's gonna be really fun. We have our box dens, which you can see in the foreground of this picture, so those are more sensory experiences, they're kind of like hammocks, so kids with sensory disabilities can spend time there while still engaged with the playground. You have a semi-obstacle course that then leads you to the main structure, which has multiple ingress and egress points. We have various types of slides, various climbing elements, as well as on the upper deck, you can see there's the little windows that kids can see out. Another really important feature is on our swings, we are moving from having the two baby swings, which are fairly limiting, to having a friendship swing. So this one will allow a parent and children to sit together, so it's two seats that face one another and you swing cooperatively. So it can be two kids swinging together, it can be a parent and child because it's got a back, so you can lean into it. It can be a parent, a child, and another child and so we found that that would be more accessible to more people and provide better opportunities for cooperative play. Ultimately, I think this is 10 times the playground that we had, right? The other one is as old as I am and so I, I am really excited to see this because it's unlike anything we have in Elgin and it's really going to be that destination point for people coming to Elgin and especially our homeschool co-op who meets there every Wednesday.
Good job.
Great. Thanks, Elizabeth.
Okay, you wanna go on to Thomas so we can?
Yeah, let's just, go ahead and vote on both of those.
We can do on both of them, Kim. All of them or just those two?
Yeah, I should do, they're different contracts, so we should...
Okay, let's go back up to the end.
I'm making a motion, pass the resolution, new business number three.
I'll second.
Okay. We'll begin with Mayor Proton?
President, yes.
McShan, yes?
Kasnovsky, yes.
Gibson, yes.
Slaying, yes.
Love, yes.
Callahan, yes.
Rodriguez, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Okay.
I'm gonna need to do two.
Do we need to do, yeah, we gotta go back and do two because I'll... Do we need to do, yeah, we got to go back and do two, because I was... Okay, so let me get, uh, number two.
I'll make a motion to approve, that's motion number two is stated.
Second, okay. All right, so we'll begin with Councilmember Kavanowski.
Kaczynowski, yes.
Gibson, yes.
Slayne, yes.
Love, yes.
Callahan, yes.
Rodriguez, yes.
Dennis, yes.
President, yes.
McShan, yes. All right. Yeah, we can go to number four.
All right, so now we're on to Thomas Park, and we actually have a couple issues here that we, first is, we wanted to discuss with council our situation there regarding the project that was initially included in the five-year capital plan and that we previously called Phase Two, and we had talked about when we did our COs in 21, and that was, we were going to expand the entrance on Madison, is it Madison that the street's on? We have that tract of land that goes out to Madison. We had a, we think, our idea is to create a much better welcoming, open atmosphere at Thomas, increase parking, and increase the trail through there, and we thought that this was a project, well, we still think this is a project that's possible through, through city forces, but we've basically reached a point where, just like we talked about before, we've talked about other funding problems we run into, and anybody else that's doing construction projects now, that we, we had $150,000 from the COs devoted to this project. We thought we could get done, but, but it's, it's probably going to cost us about twice that to do the project that we talked about. So, we're prepared to try to go ahead and do that and work on that, but in a situation that's very similar or parallel, we think in some ways to what we ran into with the police station, it, we wanted to make sure, I guess we were talking tonight about whether or not council may want to pause on this part and reconsider what we're going to do with those funds. If you recall, with the police station, we, that whole effort started with an idea to rehab and restore the existing building. And once we got into the very detailed aspects of that building project and what it would entail, we realized, well, we were really close to, we might as well build a new building for what we would spend on the old building. So, I think from the staff position, and we've come to the conclusion that if we're prepared to spend $300,000 or more on this opening, we can do that, but just like, I guess we were talking about with the five-year plan before, if we're going to spend that kind of money on this effort in Thomas Park, is there, do we want to consider that other things may take priority over doing this entrance project? Amy, am I getting it right? Basically, this is to discuss with the Parks Board and others.
Right, so, on the, we, the, the costs for this, the contract really came in late at the end of the week, and on our part, we want everyone to have the opportunity to think more about, is the additional entrance and the parking, that of the funding should be invested, 350,000? Or are there other improvements at the park that should be considered? As you just awarded a playground and surfacing and shade at Morris Park for, right at 300,000. Now, the playground at Thomas is in much better condition, and it is still a fully functional playground, but it's, it's not at all, and it doesn't have the surfacing, et cetera. So, that's, in visiting with the community and in what the Parks Board has looked at, these are kind of the two big things. New playground with shade, new entrance with additional parking. There is a need for additional parking, and there was a lot of support for that from the community, but we were not expecting to have, you know, for it to be this expensive, so.
And we, and we have those other projects that are in the five-year plan for Phase Two, three other projects in Thomas Park, so we can talk about those, and this, this conversation doesn't affect the basketball court, right? We're still ready to go over that.
No, no, as we talked to you about the basketball court, that's a $68,000 contract to do the surfacing. Elizabeth's got a great model here.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to talk about that in a bit, but I just wanted to say that.
Yeah, but it's separate.
That's a separate issue. So, I guess all we're, I know Thomas Park's something we've talked about a lot, and so I guess we're making our point. It's, it's, if we could have done it for what we thought we could do it for, for what we thought two years ago we could do it for, then we'd just be moving ahead with this project about the entrance, but given that, that type of investment, and given what Amy just said, and we've heard that here at this council dius, that playgrounds, shaded areas, the path out there, are, are those items... So, we're just trying to, tonight, we just want to know, do we, is it we're stepping back a little bit on that to talk about that, which obviously is going to delay the project? Or should we go ahead? We're not saying it's a bad project. The entrance, everything that we talked about originally is still something that should be done. So, but, but this is one of the things that, that we wanted to get some feedback from council before we, before we actually went ahead with the project.
I have a question. Is it, is it fair to assume that the park is underutilized because of the lack of parking?
No, I don't think so.
No, that's not, that's not it.
Okay, I mean, I'm just curious, but I, I'm concerned, I mean, we need to take care of this park.
That's right. We'd rather...
And I, I don't want us to, I don't want us to neglect the things that, that need to happen here, because we might not be able to have the money for a couple of parking spots, but then...
Yeah, and I'd say that we, you know, part of it, I think, from a safety standpoint, these are all things we talked about a long time ago, that a new, more open entrance, if, if we make the park what we think we want it to be, then we will have a parking issue, but, but yes, right now, it, so it's, it's more about, this project was more about thinking down that road than it was addressing an immediate need, so, so yeah, I think, I, that, I guess that's why we're bringing it up. I'm not sure, you said it, I'm not sure that parking spaces is number one.
I just, I mean, I, I personally feel that our parks are woefully limited in, in Elgin for, for lots of reasons, whether it be for equal access for, for kids with different disabilities, wheelchairs or whatever, or for different athletic sports or sport events, or community gatherings. So, the parks are important to me for those reasons. I just want to make sure we take care of it.
Yeah, I, as someone who, you know, likes, who walks to that park, I would like to take a step back and make sure we're spending our money on the best thing, or what, what community needs. I mean, I will say that I do not, I drive, get in my car and I drive to Morris because there's shade there, because at Thomas, there's, there's no shade, and so six months of the year, unless you're maybe walking the track in the morning or late in the evening, it's pretty unbearably hot. And so, as a mother with a small child, like going to the playground is not, it, we will do it in the wintertime. So, anyways, I, my, my suspicion is while parking is limited, there may be some other improvements, you know, that other community members, and I'm even wondering, does it make sense to have some sort of community meeting at the park, or even, you know, I mean, it's interesting going, I mean, when you go there, it's interesting, it's, it's lovely to see all the people using it. You've got Little Leagues using it, you've got walkers using it, you've got young folks, you've got some older folks, you've got families, so, but I think it would be interesting to get, you know, there. I, I don't know how engaged they've been in terms of the people using it on a regular basis, but...
And so, when we say take a step back, what are we taking a step back to? Yeah, I would say that we, one, we, I think the staff does an outstanding job making, creating opportunities to reach out to the public to give input. I think one thing that we're concerned, that I guess I'm concerned about is, again, we're trying, I think you know I'm focused on getting these things done on the ground, and we step back too far, then we've lost a whole nother year before we're doing anything on the ground. So, I, staff has some ideas, and certainly the Parks Board has some ideas.
Right, having the opportunity to engage in a, in a short, compact time, not some sort of extended, never-ending engagement.
We can circle back very quickly with, with some of those ideas. I guess one thing I'm sitting here thinking that I forgot about, that, that, I, at least one person or two remembers is, part of this issue is, it's part of the big drama we went through for the funding, for the certificates of obligation, were, were two things. One, we were wrongly accused, the city was, of borrowing money for one thing and spending it on something else. So, it's been important to me that we stuck to the, what, even though we weren't bound by that list, and I'll put in a plug for certificates of obligation, that's what makes it different, even by, we talked about doing this project, whereas the school district is, has to spend the money exactly on what they said when the bond issue came. Certificates of obligation give the council the discretion to do just what we're talking about here. Yes, we said we were going to spend the money on this, but now that we're faced with this choice, we have an opportunity to think about, is there a better way to spend it? So, so I think we're, we're all committed to doing more in Thomas Park, we've talked about that from day one.
So, was the...
We're sensitive to the fact that...
Was it just for the entrance, or was it for Thomas Park altogether? When you all talked about the entrance?
Well, we start, we start in the beginning was, was, I, I would say it was more about Thomas Park in general, but, but we zeroed in on this project pretty early on, but, but it's important to understand, we're, we're not bound by any of that. It was just what we talked about, our intentions, and, and the truth is, that's why we've continued to run over that list with the council. Everything we said we were going to spend money on, that's what we've done. Now, the amounts of money have been different, and we've had to fund and supplement because they were good projects, but this is one where, so, and again, we're not talking about spending less money, we're, we're just talking about, is there a better way to spend the money? And, and, and I think it's different in the sense that on all the other projects, we've had a pretty clearly defined path that the council has always supported, and I think this is one that, that we're, that's why we're bringing it back, make sure we're, we're focused on the same page. So, again, I think, you know, truthfully, when you're in a situation like we're at, are out there, I don't think there's a way to, there needs to be a lot of improvements in Thomas Park, so I don't think any of it could really be a waste of money. It really is more this list of priorities. The staff has some ideas in mind. What are those? I think we could come back fairly quickly. Those ideas, Amy?
Well, look, the, the playground with shade and surfacing has been the other thing the communities talk to us about the most, after dealing with the basketball court, which is a wholly separate item on your agenda.
And, and the path, too.
Yes, and definitely paving the path so that it is a...
Keeps eroding.
Yes.
So, just those things alone, Arthur's were talking about, it won't take long to eat up that much money pretty quickly.
Is it, is it possible to use that additional entrance that we were going to create a parking lot and do, I don't know, an informal parking lot? So, it's kind of like, it's not really being utilized now, could you allow and do maybe, I don't know, $5, $10,000 worth of improvements there, like a gravel lot?
Well, we, again, this, that part is another function of, where we started out on this, of, we have more staff than we don't now, but we're down, because we're down on staff, because we're behind on public works, we have the capabilities when we're fully staffed and have the equipment to build some of those things. So, that's, that, the other part of that is, you know, maybe over the next year or so, we would find the time to be able to do this work. Again, part of this, part of our thinking is, we're anxious to make something happen out there very short term, and that's where this action tonight is on the agenda. If we want this entrance to happen now, we're ready to go with this other contractor, but are, are there ways we can do that over time? Sure, I think we can, it's just more about, but, I think, like a lot of small towns, Elgin has talked a lot about, someday we're going to do this thing or do that thing, and, and I feel like that sounds too much like that, and I think in, in Thomas Park's case, that's probably, there's been a lot of things talked about that haven't been, haven't been completed out there, and so, so we're very sensitive to doing things that we can say are going to happen in a short period of time. And I think that's the other part about the playground, the other restrooms, the, the, the snack bar, whatever, those are things that, that could be improved. They wouldn't be top of our list, but...
Right, well, so, actually, a couple important projects that did happen over the past year are in your packet, and it might be a good opportunity for us to get to huddle up with Ward One in particular, with the Parks Advisory Board, and work out a community input meeting at the park, but you had two Eagle Scout projects this year that are in your packet. One was George Ramsey, sorry, George Ramsey. He painted that concession stand, did all the trim, all the railing around it. It's like a new building. It looks so much better. So, that was his Eagle project, and then Robert Miller redid the three sets of bleachers for the baseball field, and so those have new weather-treated wood and are in great shape. So, both of the, those two projects, while they were small from a financial perspective, they did involve a lot of labor that the, those two boys organized, and they have really made a very positive aesthetic improvement. So, those are two really good things, but yes, the, the trail is always talked about a lot, and the need for shade, surfacing, playground equipment, so.
Yeah, I, I think that's actually good, Amy. I'm going to recommend that we, we table this particular resolution and let Amy and Elizabeth run with the ball on this, with the Parks Board and with our Ward One council members, and I think we should be able to come back pretty quickly with a revised recommendation. Something that's reasonable and something we can do pretty quickly.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think I can, I won't, I won't speak for Councilmember Gibson, but I think both of us are very excited to invest in this park. We just want to make sure that if we're going to put, you know, whether it's 150 or if it's 300 now, that it's really, I think, the thing, the kind of the primary needs of, of the park.
The most beneficial.
Yeah, exactly, so, but...
That's, that's the exact issue.
Yeah.
That's why we brought it up, so.
And on a, on a side note, I, I hope we get the opportunity to say thank you to, to Eagle Scouts.
Yes, we, we'll make sure that they make an appearance.
All right. Thanks, Amy. Well, I don't think we need to vote, it's okay.
Move on to...
Five. No, we're already doing that.
Okay. Number five is a resolution, the city of Elgin authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Sport Court of Austin for repairing of the Thomas Memorial Park basketball court and making certain plans there, too.
So, this is a project that's pretty simple, that we're ready to move forward with quickly, and it's something that we've already invested some improvements on, is we put a new fence up around the basketball court, and so we're putting a new court surface down with markings and new basketball goals, and this is, when you say the bid came in 68,000, Amy, we just got that today, and so it's, so it's a unique court surface, so go ahead and talk about it a little bit, Elizabeth.
So, one of the main things we noticed about the Thomas basketball court is there is an uneven surface that leads to puddling, and it's also very slick. In the past, we've repainted it to make it less slick, however, we wanted to move forward with a more permanent solution, and so we found this really amazing surfacing that they use in the Northeast. It has a really high UV rating, it means that if there are puddles on the court, they rest below the surfacing, so the court is ready to use faster, and I think in an El Nino year, that's going to be really critical for us. And this, when I tested it out with my basketball players at the Recreation Center, they were really excited for it, so I think the combination of the new fancy court surfacing that is more adaptable... So I think the combination of the new fancy court surfacing that is more adaptable to the different weather types we have, is going to be a big draw, especially with the new hoops and everything we're getting. So, I brought this because it is something really interesting, and I can pass it around, or I can walk around with it, yeah.
Will it, will it be that color? Well, because I like that, I like the lighter color just from a heat perspective. I was thinking like, let's, it's the purple park, so let's make it purple. But that could also be a very hot court, so.
So, but this is a project with, it, it's ready to go, bid out soon, Michael, you know, starting. And should have it for the summer, by the end of the summer as well.
Elizabeth, I know, okay, so this is a crazy question. But if the water is going to be coming through, and it'll puddle down here, is it going to mold? Is it going to dry up real quickly? Does this make it-
It should evaporate the same way it does right now on the concrete. And then we did ask what happens if there's dirt or pebbles under it, and it peels back just like a rug. You just unhook it from the edges, it's screwed down on the edges, you just unscrew it, lift it up, you blow it out, it's back down.
So the city's going to make that, coming out there here?
It shouldn't need it often. That was the draw of it, is it's lifted up.
Hmm.
And it's got more cushion than concrete.
Well, we're not going to have situations with potential vandalism, somebody coming out and taking a square, and you can just peel it back.
So, they would have to have some fairly industrial equipment with them to undo all of the screws, and there's a metal striping that goes down the edge that gets screwed into the concrete. So, public works guys can do it, I don't know that teenagers are going to be so well-equipped. Let's hope not.
That's what I was about to say, let's hope not. So I'm kind of like, we're doing it 22.
Yeah, I'm excited that it gives more cushion, so it'd be much more like playing on the wood at the Recreation Center versus playing on concrete, like we do everywhere.
Okay. Any other questions about this one, before we take a vote? I entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve this.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, let's begin with Councilmember Dennis.
Dennis, yes.
Roger, yes.
McShan, yes.
Kozniewski, yes.
Gibson, yes.
White, yes.
Calend, yes.
Rodriguez, yes.
Okay, the next one is number six, a resolution of the City of Elgin appointing Blas, Blase Coy-
Coy.
Okay. As Associate Judge of the City of Elgin Municipal Court in accordance with the City Manager, I mean, City Charter, making findings effective providing for their, their related matters.
Thank you, Mayor, this item, as said, it's, if you saw on your packet, Judge Carter recommended, rightfully so, that, that she having an Associate Judge, so at times when she's not available, she can get some backup help. And, and in accordance with the Charter, the council needs to approve that appointment.
Is Blase Coy well-known in the community?
In Bastrop.
In Bastrop, Municipal Church.
He's been judge over there for a while.
I think their plans were to swap off with each other.
Yeah, they, she had gotten some other backup before, and that went away. And so, yeah, this is a colleague of hers that she's recommending.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve our number six resolution for Associate Judge. All right, number two.
I'll second.
All right, we'll begin with Mayor Pro Tim Breger.
Breger, yes.
McShan, yes.
Kozniewski, yes.
Gibson, yes.
White, yes.
Love, yes.
Calend, yes.
Rodriguez, yes.
Dennis, yes. Did you hear that? It sounded like an hamburger. Yeah, yeah. Those three minutes, is it?
Okay, next, number seven.
Do you want to read that all again? You don't have to.
Okay, number seven, what I read before at the beginning.
All right, good. So this is, the item, we had a public hearing before, a quest for a zoning change from R1 to R2 for, for this tract of land off Carlson Lane. These, these are slides that are, have been shown, have been provided by the developer. As we said, the council looked at this before, if you recall, originally the developer had wanted smaller lots, and, but we couldn't reach agreement on a planned development district with them. It's important to note that always in these cases, this is a straight-up zoning change. And while these pictures are shown for perspective, when we change zoning without a development agreement, the developer's not committed to any project or, or any particular work. But, but it is in an area of town that we're seeing a whole lot of development, and it's on the edge of town. It's, it's just a oddly shaped piece of property, in my opinion, for residential development, for really any kind of development. But, it's a request made by the, the property owner, Plan Commission unanimously recommended approval.
So as you stated, rezoning, even though they don't have a plan yet technically, they can change it regardless?
Still has to fit the zoning. I think what, what's typically, we're just going from R1 to R2, so it'd still have to be a residential project. So it's not, there's not the same kind of risk as if we were changing to commercial, and that would open the door for-
Right.
-anything to happen. So, given it, we, we would, I think, as you know, we've talked about, we try to get development agreements now with every developer, and, but given its location, it's, I don't know. I'll just say, that's why we have the Plan Commission, I'm not going to get crossways with them, they've recommended approval. It's interesting on this slide, provided by the developer, that Eagles Landing Homestead Estates and Harvest Ridge all have a development agreement. They do have smaller lots, but, but it's because we have a development agreement to each one of them, so.
So just, sorry, clarifying, if we approve the zoning, they can build as-is, or they do have to come back for a development agreement?
No, they, they, if they submit a plan that complies with subdivision rules, they could build, which basically this concept plan does.
Okay.
They could build that. My point is, when we say that, it doesn't, it doesn't require this owner to build that. There's no stipulation about anything other than code requirements. Our development agreements always end up with the developer, the city providing some concessions, but the developer always ends up doing more than what, the minimum, what they have to. Now, so when you, but if you're building under existing zoning, then all you have to do is what the code says. Now, now I would say, in this case, not to interrupt you, that, again, it'd be hard to build a housing development out there that's way less than all the other houses around it, if you know what I mean. The market is kind of setting the standard out there, what almost what you'd have to build. But, so, the risk of them doing something that we have a big problem with, I think, is fairly minimal.
Well, I guess, you know, and I'm pro parks, so I'm looking at these parks, but knowing that there's no guarantee, so that could turn into just more lots, right?
They still have a parkland dedication requirement.
Okay.
I guess I don't know exactly how that relates to this specific-
Well, I think-
I, I think there's probably more parkland shown on here than probably what they have to have. David, you got anything to add to any of that, as said?
A lot of the parkland stuff will be determined at the time of concept plan, which is an independent process. The Planning and Zoning Commission will look at the plan and, and consider it, and it'll kind of, everything will go from there.
But, I think to your question, with the right zoning, you don't necessarily ever have to come back with council.
Correct.
You can build something that, that just fits the rules.
Correct.
But they still have to go back to them?
They would still have, still have to, yes, get approval from staff.
Yes.
And, and city engineer and all.
And all that.
You expect the, the city to have the water in sewer purpose?
Yeah, it's, it's, David, you know the answer to that, is this, this is aqua water?
I don't know that answer for sure, no.
I, I would presume it's probably Aqua CCN, so-
Right.
We'd be wanting them to do one of those agreements where they would buy out, and same with sewer, right, same thing.
Yep.
They'd have to pay all the costs associated with that, but they're in our CCN, so entitled to the service.
And that's our city limits?
That, that is, is basically the, what would that be, the, the north, kind of the northwest corner of the city limits, probably, the extreme.
Yeah, the project is right next to the Elgin-Roaring Meadows project, which is to the immediate east of it. Sorry, I get east and west confused sometimes, but anyways, it's to the immediate east of, or actually, the project's to the immediate west of Elgin-Roaring Meadows, but that's the, Elgin-Roaring Meadows is where the larger lots are that were originally subdivided.
So, so we see 45, 50, and 60-foot lots.
Yeah.
And with this, with this zoning, they go in there with nothing but 45s, right?
I'm sorry?
With this, we, we approve this? At this level?
You go backwards, according to 60 foot.
They do minimum 60-foot wide lots, minimum 7,500, or 60-foot wide lots as measured from the 25-foot front setback, and minimum 7,500 square feet area. They can do larger lots, these are just minimum sizes.
But this, can you see this graph, David? I think they're just trying to say here, we changed our submission, right?
I believe that's what the applicant is indicating, yes.
They've gone to bigger lots than what they wanted to do in the beginning. But that's when we couldn't, we couldn't agree for, for the BDD.
But what you showed before, I think, was comparing, because Harvest Ridge are smaller lots, right?
Yes.
But they're BDDs, and that's one they got.
That's right, that's right.
Right.
But they're going, okay. This, this allows for duplexes, right? It does. Which is the plan. So, they're going to be more dens. Well, that's the thing, I don't think we can say what they're going to be. They're telling us what their plan is right now. There's potential for them to be more dens. Because you take two families and put them on 60 feet rather than one on 45.
But they still have to follow all the codes. They still have to, with the duplex, they still have to follow the coding for parking.
That's right.
So they'll get out from under any of that.
So, if we approve it, they, they come up with their master plan, and they bring it to you?
Yes, they'll do a concept plan under our subdivision ordinance, that'll go to the, staff will review that, and then eventually go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration, that will set the development pattern for it, versus your PDD rezoning where you guys set the development pattern for it.
But even if it doesn't come back to us, going this route, they still have to follow all the codes.
Yes.
The traditional ones, which is 60 foot.
I mean, well, I think, I think we're quiet, because I think philosophically, this is not something super exciting, knowing the extra traffic, and the fact that these are farm roads and all that. But at the same time, you know, in a lot of ways, I feel like our hands are somewhat tied, because, you know, I mean, it's private property, and I guess we could vote it down, whether what kind of reputation that's going to give us as a city. But, yeah, I, you know.
No, I think that's well said. It's, I don't want to act like it's, we'll make sure that what I'm saying is, it won't create a problem for us. It's just not how we've been doing things, and, but you're all right. Part of the, the big challenge we have now is, Texas is a property rights state, people have a, a right to do something with their property, and so-
And municipalities have less and less-
That's right.
-say and annexation and, and-
So it is why it's-
Local control.
PDDs are great with, with us. And I will say, the developer of this property has done other PDDs with us, but it's, it really, in my opinion, it's the piece of property, it's just not, I'd rather see them acquire more property around it and do something bigger, and I think they would do that if they could. But, but it's kind of a situation where I think we're kind of both stuck. They have a piece of property, they can't really point to creating big problems for us. We'd just like something different, but, but I think they'd probably like something different, too, if they could.
This is the river meets the road, if you know what I could have said, and I, I was the first one to say, we need bigger lots. This is bigger lots. But the concessions are, we don't get near as much help from the developer, we don't get money for the parks, we don't get money to help with the streets. We don't get that, but we do get larger lot sizes. And that's what you have to give and take between the two.
And we tried to do a PDD with them?
Yes.
Can you remind me of that? Why that didn't come to fruition?
Well, again, it was, in my recollection, it really was, they're just so limited with this particular piece of property, what they could do, and still make it work, you know, it's, well, you said yourself, the parks, you have a piece of property shaped like that, where you've got to create the right access in and out, there's not much left to play with, so.
And-
It just, it, I, we didn't feel like they've reached a point where they could put the amenities on the ground that, that warranted us giving smaller lots. So, so that, that too, it wasn't like they refused necessarily to do what we asked, it just couldn't, couldn't make it work from a business standpoint.
I mean, on the other hand, too, I'm like, well, that's your problem, that you bought that piece of lot, and you can't get the other sellers to sell. And I think we're also in a market where I don't think, you know, I think at some point, they can acquire the land around it if they wanted to do something bigger, so I don't know, that's-
Trying to get on your side, so you're just-
I'm saying, stay joyous, I got a point.
You're going begging for it. Well, true, you know, you could look at it, you could say, this is just a reason. So they want R2, R2 is going to, like you said, duplexes probably bring in even more traffic congestion. Do we want to do that in this area?
And they're not helping with the roads. So, yeah, that is-
But it's larger lots.
Can I add something? I'm, so I'm with the developer on this track, and so I guess I wanted to address a couple of things.
You need to say your name.
Oh, sorry, my name is Rachel Shanks. With roadway improvements, are, we do trigger doing a traffic impact analysis, so we will have to do a study about how our project, fully built out, will impact roads, which usually ends in working with agreements on making road improvements within this area to help with that. The other item on that is like parkland, I know there's a concern about not having desirable parks within this community. We will either be required to meet the parkland dedication amount for this, this track, and amenitizing that with playgrounds, or working with the park, do y'all have a Parks Board? Yes, Parks Board, on agreeing to, you know, if we do the two-pocket parks, can we go above and beyond on putting playgrounds on them so that you guys find them desirable? Or can we do a combined three-acre park? So we still have to meet all of those requirements within the R2 zoning, so not trying to get around and do a less desirable subdivision. We just find that in this area, just going straight zoning, which is, it's a simpler process- process, but we're following City of Elgin's code, we're not cutting corners, we're not trying to do a, a, a project that doesn't fit in with all of the projects going in around it, we're just simplifying the process by using your code to zone this track.
You have to follow the same rules, just like we said.
Yes, yes, so there's no.
Just like we said.
Yeah, so we'll still have to do a traffic impact analysis, we'll still have to make contributions to roadway improvements, we will still have to do some sort of parkland within this track.
Because those are the minimum requirements.
Yes, you guys have architectural standards in regards to houses, we will still have to follow all of those guidelines, um, for the home builder, there's no cutting of corners or, or doing a lesser product on this track, um, it's just going a straight zoning route instead of a specialized, um, PED that would have to, you know, be enforced, and, and to me is more complicated than a straight zoning, so.
Sure, it's more, it's less complicated for the developer, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean. This is a, this is a small track, so, you, when you're looking at, to me, I, when I do more specialized zoning, it's larger tracks, there's more involved with it, this one is fifty-two acres, you know, right now, we're at a hundred and sixty-six units, that's, that's not a large property, um, so doing more of the straight zoning route made sense on this property, and still is cohesive with what's around it, which is fifty-foot lots and Harvest Ridge, Eagles Landing.
That's what you requested first, it was even smaller than fifty-foot slots, that's what the developer requested, that's what you wanted to do.
Well, we went in with what was around.
That's what you wanted to do, and we couldn't agree on a PDD, that's why you're here now, asking for this zoning, and all you're saying is, you have to adhere to the law.
Right, and.
Okay.
I, I personally think we know this area is growing, and I think, I think we can be a little bit choosier about things that we greenlight, in my, in my opinion, so. There are no lack of home developers coming to this area.
It's really not. All righty, well, do we have a, a motion for or against?
Yeah, I'm like, see, well, I like the bigger lots. Sure. I'm tired of the little damn thing.
Well, I can tell you from, I'm just now kind of taking all this in and thinking about this, um, with the larger lots, the possibility of duplexes and increased traffic, I, I get all that, but there's also another impact that would impact our community, that would be the additional students to our school district that this could produce when we're already busting at the seams, because if you do add duplexes, then you have potential to add lower-income families with more children typically is, is way worse, um, and so that would be a concern of mine if that, if that did happen, but obviously, we don't know what the, their master plan is, so.
And, and I'll just say, I'm not, I'm a big fan of density, I like density, I don't know that I like density at the expense of no other amenities for the community, and that's kind of what it feels like, I'm, um.
Would you feel more comfortable if they had a development plan?
Yeah, I mean, when I, when I, I guess, you know, when I think of something like Harvest Ridge or Trinity Ranch or something like that, like, I feel like those are bringing amenities as, as much as, you know, I think a lot of us don't necessarily like to see farmland turned into houses, it's the reality we're living, um, and so, I think, at least for me personally, if there's something, you know, I, I go out to Trinity Ridge Ranch, because my son likes to look at the cows, and we look at the cows, but I also think like, yeah, these are gonna be parks and trails that eventually, when he's bigger and riding a bike, we can go on, and so at least, that gives me some sort of comfort in terms of, um, the, you know, the amenities, so.
I think for me, I'm just stumped on the, um, there's no development agreement, so they could change it, I think that's just.
They can't change it, they still have to follow the codes, the, the standard codes, that, that, don't, don't put that in your head, they can't change that, right, they still have to follow the minimum requirements, and it'll be a sixty-foot lot, the question here is, it's just a zoning change, are we gonna change it from single-family, which is R1, to single-family and duplexes, which is R2, that's the only question here, and do we do that?
I think, I think at this point, that, well, I'll stop talking, but there's housing everywhere, and, you know, this is not Elgin twenty years ago, when we were begging for developers to come here, so, personally think we can be a little choosier with what we want to see.
I would agree, and I would motion that we deny it.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion that we deny the request, and we'll begin with, uh, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Rodriguez, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Breger, yes.
McShan, yes.
Kaczynowski, yes.
Gibson, yes.
So I know.
Love, yes.
Callan, yes.
Okay, motion is denied.
David, just for the record, I know we talked about this, but I can't remember, did we, does it require a supermajority of the council to?
No, the only time it requires the, uh, the, requires a supermajority or close to it is if the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends denial and you reverse that.
Denial to approve, but not.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next is our election of Mayor Pro Tim of the city council, you know, we just had elections, and so therefore it is time to, uh, uh, elect a mayor, Pro Tim.
I vote Sue, she's so knowledgeable, so I'm going for her.
So what is our process? Just make a motion?
Will you make a motion, and she just said Sue.
So she made the motion.
Do we have a second for Sue?
I'll second.
All right, and then we'll begin with Councilmember Love.
Love, yes.
Callan, yes.
Rodriguez, yes.
Dennis, yes.
Yes.
It is.
McShan, yes.
Kaczynowski, yes.
Gibson, yes.
Does it mean more cakes?
She said we're fixing to have one right now.
Let's play gas hole.
All right, um, announcements, Ms. Amy? We don't have anything in the second session.
Do you have a special announcement tonight, um, that y'all are some of the first to be invited, um, to come celebrate on June fifteenth, Molly Alexander, who serves on the Elgin Economic Development Corporation and the Elgin Historic Review Board, and has been a huge champion of downtown development in Elgin, Texas, as well as a huge leader for it in Austin, Texas, and had a stint of her career in Georgetown as well, she was awarded the highest honor from the, um, American Institute of Architects, the Austin Chapter, and the Austin Foundation of Architecture, awarded her the Alan Tanaguchi Award for Public Architecture, recognizing her three decades of work in Austin and Elgin, and so I've shared with you, um, a press release that we'll be putting out tomorrow, and we'll be celebrating Molly on Thursday the fifteenth from five to seven at Margot Sawyer's home, um, the studio at one nineteen Central Avenue in downtown Elgin, um, and that is thanks to Cadence Bank, Elgin EDC, Elgin Main Street Board, and Frontier Bank, um, are gonna cover the expenses of the party, we hope you'll come and celebrate Molly, um, and all the great work that she has done in, in Elgin, as well as amazing work in Austin, so. Other big announcements for the weekend, it is Juneteenth, um, starting on Friday and Saturday, um, so make sure that you don't miss out on the street dance, the parade, the festival Saturday at Veterans Memorial Park, street dance Friday nights at Veterans Memorial Park too, and, uh, and then at the end of the month, you've got Western Days, but this weekend, um, enjoy the Juneteenth celebrations, it's sip, shop, and stroll on Thursday night, and there will be lots of extra fun things happening downtown, and, um, your craft brewery is open and busy and having parties all the time, so be sure to check out Circle, they have been partnering with various groups, um, you know, for different celebrations, so, um, you just have like a really cool town, aren't y'all lucky you're city council here?
Of course.
I definitely like working here, thanks, you guys.
Are we preparing, I guess, council?
Who got the truck?
Who got the truck? Where the truck?
Unfortunately, I'm out of town.
Oh, that's not.
Yeah, I'm out of town, that's what it is.
That's not good. Chuck, can we have your truck?
Have you seen inside of my truck? I got cold hair.
I know, I can always have a convertible.
And I've had it repainted since last year.
Oh, my goodness.
Are we?
Clean it up.
Yeah, can you clean it up? Chuck's saying he's gonna clean up his truck.
And the fundraiser for, for Cody Vander, uh, the five-year-old T-baller from Elgin we had last weekend, uh, Mayor McShan donated items, and Councilmember, uh, Gibson donated some items, did real good, just the bake sale alone, I think we cleared a thousand dollars, a little bit more than that, and John Almiron did the chickens, and there was lots of help, uh, from tons of volunteers and.
The chickens were great.
I think, uh, it, it all turned out really, really well, and he has intermission, but he still has to go through his treatment, so he started his third treatment just this week.
All righty, we are adjourned, it is eight twenty forty-nine? Eight twenty-seven?